And we are live and ready, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. City Council work session. It's a Q and A session tonight with Dr. Hans Zink. And we'll go ahead and take it away.
Hi, Dr. Zink. My name is Rachel Friedlander, and I really appreciate your attendance. I'm the city manager here in Saldovia, and I was just hoping you could provide counsel with insights on how COVID in Alaska is looking before the start of the summer season? And any other insights you think Saldovia City Council should take into consideration as we move forward in this post-pandemic era? Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Rachel, and thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the entire council for having me here tonight. I have had it on my to-do list to come visit you all for so long, and I am just so honored every time you all invite me to come and learn more about your community and share. We are in a very different place with COVID-19 than we were in other times that we've spoken together with the city council. And the biggest reason is because of vaccine. And so really, what this summer looks like really depends on what our vaccine uptake looks like and how many people choose to get vaccinated. We are rolling out a big campaign called Sleeves Up for Summer. We got a lot to do this summer. We got tourists, we got people to move, we got business to have open, we got plants to grow. We got a lot to do. And by having people well vaccinated, it helps to make sure that COVID doesn't get in the way of our summer plans. So that is the biggest thing that we're really focused on between now and June 1st, is to do everything we can to make sure the Alaskans have the answers to the questions that they need to be able to protect themselves, their family, their loved ones, and not have COVID infect them. I think COVID is going to be here with us for a while. Worldwide continues to be a problem, pretty devastating what's happening in India right now. And we know that we'll continue to need to walk, monitor, and watch this virus closely. However, we have currently FDA-approved three very efficacious vaccines that are all very safe. The Johnson &amp; Johnson did pause because of a rare type of blood clot that it can affect, particularly women, and particularly women under the age of 50. So we want to make sure that women have that information and are able to make a decision that makes the most sense for them, and happy to answer any questions about that overall. We are seeing increased uptake across the state. We were the most vaccinated in the country for quite some time. Unfortunately, we are slipping from that title quite quickly as we have to continue to just make sure that Alaskans feel confident to get vaccinated. Anything we can do to help the people of Saldovia get vaccinated? We do have a Physicians Bureau team that is always happy to come do a long Q and A and questions and answer questions. We had heard recently on a mayor's call that we were unaware of before, it just needing to get some kind of more pop-up vaccine sites to make it easier for Saldovians to get vaccinated. And so we can totally look at doing that, and our team was exploring that option. We have also started vaccinating at the airport. You, all three vaccines are available now at the Anchorage Airport, so people coming in and out can get vaccinated. And for the Johnson &amp; Johnson, that's just a single dose. And then there's, if it's the Moderna or the Pfizer, they can get their first dose there and then their second dose at another spot. So again, knowing that Alaskans use those airports as a place of close contact. The other thing is just knowing that testing continues to be a really important tool. So particularly for those who are not vaccinated, testing prior to a gathering, testing prior to a, you know, meeting, all can be really useful tools. Continue to encourage things like testing for people who interact with the public regularly, particularly those who are unvaccinated. So happy to dive into any more of those questions. But I think this summer is very different than last summer, and really hoping that Alaskans can pull together, take as many people as vaccinated before the summer. The last two things I just wanted to mention about vaccine is it's completely free. So there's been a lot of misinformation about that. And two is the fact that it, not only did I mention is it incredibly safe and efficacious, but that if you're fully vaccinated, you don't need to quarantine. So someone comes in to visit your beautiful community, goes on a kayaking tour with you, and they turn out positive, if you are vaccinated, you are not considered a close contact, as you can continue to operate your business without having COVID impact you. So for a lot of tourism, a lot of businesses, that makes a really big difference in continuing to operate through the summer. So with that, I will hand it back over and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Zink. Any questions from council? Bobby, go ahead.
Just a second. Can you hear me, Dr. Zink?
Yes, I can hear you well, thanks.
Okay, hi, and thank you for coming, being here via Zoom. We appreciate it. I have a couple of questions. Is it for sure that the recommendation is to get a booster with the Moderna? And well, I guess with all three of the vaccines at six months? Is that true, what we're hearing?
Thanks for that question. It is not true. So there is no recommendation for a booster shot at this time. And if there is a booster shot, it will definitely be longer than six months. So no recommendation for a booster at six months. The data is clear that this works at least six months, and that's because we've got Phase III trial participants that are at six months. How much longer than six months really depends on both how well this vaccine works for your long-term immunity, which looks really robust, better than influenza. And number two, it depends on how many variants end up spreading. So I think while we have a lot of COVID spreading worldwide, it's likely we'll probably need a booster around a year, and that might happen for a year or two, and then hopefully we'll spread out and become much less frequent. Things like influenza change much more quickly than COVID. And so you, and that vaccine isn't nearly as good. And so it's about 40 to 60% efficacious, and that's why we need those ones yearly. Other vaccines like tetanus or measles last much, much longer. So my suspicion is we might need a booster at one year, but we'll really have to see. And currently, there's no recommendation for a booster. We're just going to have to continue to follow the data, but it's definitely longer than six months.
Okay, and my second question is, so I guess the recommendation is still there to wear in a closed space? It's still obviously social distancing and still wearing a mask?
Correct. Again, really depends on your vaccine status. So if everyone on that council right now in that room was vaccinated, and I have no idea if you are or not, but you would not need to distance or mask. And so that is a huge advantage of being vaccinated, is that you can gather in small groups without being masked, without social distancing. So that's, you know, having friends over for a dinner party. We've had people within DHSS where their entire department got vaccinated to kind of the same time, and then did a big leadership retreat and opened the full office up to normally. So you can gather without masking and distancing with other fully vaccinated individuals. The problem is, we still have a lot of individuals to get vaccinated, and for that reason, for their protection, we're still recommending mask and distancing, particularly in larger gatherings, or where you're mixing with a bunch of people who you don't know their vaccine status.
And does that apply to outside also?
Yeah, so great question about outside. So outside is much, much safer than inside in general. If you are outside by yourself, you know, greater than six feet from someone else, you know, you don't really need a mask outside. If you're, you know, out for a run, out for a hike, you know, that is a really safe activity to do in many ways. Even if you're in a bigger group and there's, you know, occasional times where you're closer, again, a mask is much less useful outside compared to inside. It's really kind of that cumulative droplets indoors that becomes the real risk, much more than outdoors. I do think we're getting close to the point where even the federal government may be changing its mandate regarding masks in the outside setting to not requiring masks in the outdoor setting, even if you can't socially distance. So we'll see what that looks like. I would say that the one thing for, just as a caveat, is if you are an immunocompromised person, so assume if you're getting cancer treatment, or you are a high-risk individual, the vaccines do a really good job at minimizing your risk, but they're not 100% perfect. They're 95% at protecting you against the virus itself. And so it may be worth considering distancing or masking even as those additional recommendations are let down. So again, it depends a little bit on the nature of the person, as well as the nature environment. But I can tell you now that I'm vaccinated, I'm going for runs with my friends, not distanced, not masked, because again, that outside space is much safer than indoors.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Rachel.
Dr. Zink, I was hoping on that note of masking and social distancing, you could touch on how workplaces are addressing that. It's different in a workplace where you don't want to appear like you're discriminating against people who don't elect to get the vaccine. So I know that the municipality of Anchorage released a mandate that said that people who have now gotten the vaccine don't have to mask in a workplace together. But for a municipality where you're working with the public and are unsure of the vaccination status of the public that you serve, it makes it difficult for a workplace. So I was hoping you could touch on that, as well as give us any numbers you have in terms of the Kenai Peninsula, the southern Kenai Peninsula, you know, what kind of trends in terms of numbers are you seeing in Alaska with COVID in terms of mortality and illness? We have a council member who I don't think is on the line, but was interested in some of the stats associated with that. So anything on that, in that nature would be great.
Great, no, fantastic questions. Workplace are challenging. We actually had a workplace echo this past Friday. It's recorded, and we can send it to you, and we actually had OSHA come speak to it, as well as some lawyers, because it becomes very dependent on the nature of the work and what that workplace looks like. So there are certain workplaces that if you don't know the vaccine status of your employees, it makes a huge difference in your operations. You know, seafood is a great example of where that just makes a huge difference, needing to quarantine before afterwards, test. Healthcare facilities is another great example where, you know, if you are not vaccinated, you may really be a significant other risk to people who are immunocompromised. So we always recommend talking to your legal team about, you know, if you can ask about vaccine or not. Vaccines by Supreme Court law can be required. There needs to be an exemption for strongly held religious beliefs and/or medical exemptions. So it's important to kind of look at that federal law regarding that. And oftentimes, it's recommended that you don't have a supervisor being the one asking, but either a testing coordinator or like a vaccine coordinator, someone who is in a direct supervisor to kind of understand the information about what your group looks like. Again, it really depends on the workplace and the nature of that workplace. As you mentioned, municipality of Anchorage, it's very much buildings and service to the public. And so when you're with other, you know, people in your workplace, kind of lower risk, particularly if you've got the majority of them are vaccinated, but when you're working with the public, higher risk, there's a lot more transactions and a lot more movement back and forth. And that's based, and then that's very different than someplace like a long-term care facility, where really masking makes, continues to make a big difference, even with high vaccine rates, to minimize the spread associated with COVID-19 for workers and employees in the section. So it's a little bit dependent on the workplace environment specifically. So I don't mean for that to be a cop-out. It's just, we all work in such incredibly diverse areas and situations overall. And if there's other specific questions, happy to circle back. Regarding COVID and the Kenai specifically, your community, as you know, is small, so we don't specifically have communities less than 1,000 that are up. We do have six dashboards that continue to be on our website to be able to share kind of numbers. In general, the Kenai has been okay. So not the top in the vaccine, but not the lowest in the vaccine, nor is it the top or the lowest in cases overall. So there had been kind of a little bit of an uptake here recently, which has recently slowed down, and I'm just pulling up the dashboards currently for the total case count and for the vaccine dashboard, so I can share with you those numbers. We are really, as I mentioned, making this big push for sleeves up for summer, doing everything we can to get people vaccinated, so we can have as much normal interaction as we possibly can this summer, and challenging boroughs and communities to try to increase their vaccine rate by 25%. Some communities, that won't be possible because they're already at such high vaccine rate, but for most are. So when I just pulled up our website, the leader of our community so far for percent of those 16 and plus who have received one shot is Skagway at 78.17% of their community is, has started their vaccine series. And then when I look down, I'm just moving down here as we speak, Kenai Peninsula is at 41.38%, so just a little bit below the average. Statewide, we're 49.2% of those 16 and above have received at least one shot. So Kenai is just a bit below the average. And then South Fairbanks area is at 28%, Matanuska, Susitna Borough is at 33%. So you can see, we have a really large variety of uptake across the state as a whole. But Kenai has been kind of right there in the kind of low to middle range, and same with cases. So not our areas of most concern, but we still have a lot of work to do to increase vaccine confidence and get more people vaccinated, so that we can have less cases.
And then, Dr. Zink, through the mayor, could you comment on herd immunity and when that threshold is for the day when we don't have to necessarily worry about COVID as much anymore?
Well, every person that gets vaccinated is one less significant worry for worrying about COVID. I get asked this question a lot about herd immunity. And I wonder how many people really even talked about herd immunity before COVID-19? I mean, honestly, it's not necessarily a goal that public health has been shooting for this entire time, nor is it something that is easily achieved. You really need a high percentage of the population vaccinated with a very efficacious vaccine. Herd immunity is where essentially you get enough people protected that the virus cannot move from person to person, and so the virus essentially kind of dies out and it can't move from person to person at all. So for example, smallpox, it got enough people vaccinated, it couldn't move around, and it died out. We never get to herd immunity with influenza. And so every year, we encourage people to take their, you know, flu shot, and every year, we do have people hospitalized and die with influenza. But you know, we, from public health, we've been responding to questions about herd immunity, but our goal has always remained the same, and that's to make sure that our hospital capacity is not overwhelmed, and that Alaskans have the tools and resources they need to make individual decisions to keep themselves, their family, their communities as safe as possible. So I don't think COVID is going to go away like a light switch, where suddenly it's going to be off, and we're going to hit some magic number, and it's going to go away. That kind of herd immunity number depends on how efficacious, how well the vaccines work, as well as how transmissible this virus is, which depends on the variants. So there's variables to that that are still not able to be predicted to tell you what that certain number will be. That being said, we are clearly seeing that when communities hit certain goals, we're seeing significant benefit. So even right now, when I look at the data statewide for those 16 and above compared to those 20 and above, we have way less cases in those 16 and above per population than we did even in December or November. And we've seen a much bigger decrease in those than we have in our 20-year-olds, who we have seen a decrease compared to November, when we had surge, but not nearly the same. Same in other states where they have the highest hospitalization rate in the groups that have the lowest uptake in vaccine. In Israel, when you hit 30%, you saw a big decrease in hospitalizations and deaths. When you hit 50%, you're seeing a big decrease overall in the number of people who are getting COVID, so cases really started to decrease. And then when you're getting towards places like 70% in long-term care facilities and other things, there's just so many people who are vaccinated, it has a harder time at taking hold. But that being said, you have a pocket, you have a whole family that's not vaccinated, you get one case in there, it can still take off really quickly. We also know our children are part of our herd, and they cannot get vaccinated right now. And we do have people who, like I mentioned, are immunocompromised, whose body has a harder time building up that response. And that's why we really, if we can get everyone 16 and above who can get the vaccine to get vaccinated, then they can really help be that herd and help protect the young in the middle of that herd, or those who are vulnerable. I mean, herd immunity comes from thinking about like elephants with, you know, babies in the center and all of the adult elephants around the outside. And so all of us who can get vaccinated work to protect those who can't get vaccinated, and that's how herd immunity works. So again, I don't think it's going to be a magic light. It's a worldwide virus, it's going to be around for a while, but every single person who gets vaccinated helps to mitigate it and helps to make it so we have less cases, less hospitalizations, less deaths, more businesses open, and more things happening in our kind of normal world.
Right?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. If I understood you correctly, if, once we're vaccinated, we're pretty much safe, what if we, what if we encounter somebody that has, that is active COVID? Does it get on us? Does it get in us? We don't get infected by it, but can we infect other people? And another question is, how many people have died with influenza this year?
Yeah, so fantastic questions. I'll start with the easy one first, and then I'll go back to the second one. So for influenza in Alaska, we have had no deaths from influenza this year. It's still quote influenza season, that lasts usually till May. Last year, we had 11 deaths from influenza, so we continue to watch the influenza deaths the same way that we did. We've not had a decrease in influenza testing, so we continue to do surveillance testing for influenza, and actually, many of the machines now will test for RSV, COVID, and influenza at the same time. So we, it's not that we have not been looking for influenza, it's just that there is not, we've had some cases, but we have not had nearly what we've had in other years, and we have had no deaths from influenza in the state of Alaska this year. Regarding if you are vaccinated, can you spread it to others? What does that mean? And, you know, how well are you protected? I think of the vaccine as kind of the way to build your body's immune system. So if we're taking care of ourselves physically and mentally, that helps to have our bodies be robust and strong. So if you see the virus, you can kill the virus quickly, and you can take it down, and you can get on your way. But the best way to give your body's immune system that really significant boost is to get vaccinated. And the reason is, is because it shows your body how to fight that virus. It says, this is a danger to you, this is what you need to look out for. And so it does not compromise your immune system, it does not weaken your immune system. In fact, it boosts your immune system. And so then if you find someone who's COVID-positive, you run into somebody who's COVID-positive, you've been exposed. It can still get on you, so it's not like a magic shield, you know, you can still get on your hands, or it can go in your mouth, it can go in your nose. It can start to replicate in your cells, and some people still do get COVID. So again, a vaccine that's 95% efficacious means that 1 in 20 can still get COVID if they've been exposed to it. But your body is then trained to be able to see it, and so as soon as you see it, your body is often able to just get rid of it before it can replicate and before you can spread it to others. So it significantly decreases your chance that you'll, one, get COVID, two, spread it to others. And then if you do get enough growing, say your body's immune system takes a little bit longer to kick in, and it has a chance to grow, you have a really big inoculation, you get a whole bunch of COVID, and it really gets a chance to start growing, your body has that head start. It knows how to take down that virus, and so you're less likely to be hospitalized, and you're less likely to die. And in fact, in the trials, they had no deaths associated with COVID-19 in any of the groups, because your body knew how to do it. So your body's immune system is key. It's always been key to all of this, and that's why taking care of, again, your physical, mental health. But the single best way that we take care of our immune system for viruses is by getting vaccinated. Viruses use our body to replicate, and unlike bacteria that have their own ability to replicate, bacteria are easy to attack with things like antibiotics. Versus viruses, the best way to be able to take care of them, they're really hard to treat, they're much better to be prevented. Another way I oftentimes describe it is, you know, I wouldn't tell you to hit a tree with your car just because I can take out your spleen. I wouldn't tell you to get COVID just because we've got some, you know, ways of trying to be able to treat it better than we ever did before. The single best way to protect you is to prevent getting it in the first place, and that's by having a strong immune system, and the best way to do that is to be vaccinated. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. And one follow-up, if I might. What's the stats on if you're still, feel comfortable in a mask? Is too masculine, do any better? And, and what kind of tests have been done on oxygen deprivation, even with one mask?
Yeah, yeah, fantastic questions overall. A lot of it depends on what sort of mask that you're using. So, you know, clearly, you don't want to be using a plastic mask, because then you aren't going to have good airflow back and forth between them. But the mask that we recommend, surgical mask or cloth face coverings, two-to-three-layer cloth face coverings, there have been studies looking at both CO2 levels as well as oxygen levels, and there's no impact on either of those. You know, I worked my entire clinical shift in either two surgical, like a surgical mask and a cloth mask, or an N95 mask the entire time, you know, have been for years, and there are good studies on that. Regarding one or two masks, the biggest thing that you need is you need a well-fitting mask. And so if there's big gaps on the side, or there's a lot of air coming up the top, that one doesn't work as well. You've got more air movement on both sides. And so there was a study done looking at these kind of double masking or two masks. And the reason they did that is because they were looking at the airflow around surgical masks and cloth masks, and wanted to give people the tools to have a mask that was similar to kind of like an N95, really diminishing that spread. And what they found is that, like, if you had like a two mask, or like a well-fitting surgical mask where it was tight on the sides with a cloth face covering over it, so it had good kind of, you know, like a nose bridge and good tight sides on the sides, that you really did not get particle movement in the same way, and was similar to an N95 mask. So it's a tool that people can use if, you know, they're immunocompromised, higher risk, or a higher risk situation. So for example, like getting on a plane, flying throughout the day, you know, having an N95, a KN95, or really well-fitting surgical mask are going to be key to be able to help protect you overall. So those are options, particularly if you're in a higher risk situation. And just like we pick boots and shoes for the right situation, picking a mask or no mask for the right situation is also going to be key.
Okay, I don't see any hands up.
Mr. Mayor, my name, Vivian.
Go ahead, Vivian.
Thank you. Dr. Zink, fantastic tonight, what you're, the information you're giving us. Thank you so much, if you can hear me okay?
Yeah, absolutely, thanks.
Great. Yeah, I have a question. I mean, the council is looking towards, or at least I, as a councilman, is looking for guidance to our summer season. And could you run over what the guidelines are for people entering into the state of Alaska, Alaskans, and then non-Alaskans for the first question? Second question is, what would you advise for communities who are looking at their Fourth of July celebrations or celebrations for the summer? Could you kind of touch that from your perspective, please?
Yeah, no problem. Thanks for the question. So regarding requirements from the state, when the disaster declaration expired, so did all of the requirements. We still have a health alert out there that really follows the CDC recommendations for testing, recommending testing one to three days prior to travel. And then particularly for unvaccinated individuals, for getting tested again upon arrival, and then considering a second test somewhere between three to five days afterwards, and the CDC recommendations are on there. We are kind of changing our health alert slightly, so it fits the CDC recommendations a little bit better. What's becoming increasingly clear is that for vaccinated individuals, you don't need to get tested in the same sort of way. So vaccinated individuals, as long as they're feeling asymptomatic, can move much more freely and don't require testing back and forth. So again, the state does not have any requirements regarding any of that, they are just recommendations. We'll continue to have the testing available at the airports throughout the summer to make sure that tourists and other people coming in have the opportunity to get tested if they so choose to. Now regarding Fourth of July, it's an exciting time, and it's fun to think about all the ways that we can have a much more of a summer. I would continue to think about the things that you've thought about before, including outside. Again, outside is much, much safer than inside. So the more you can be doing outside, enjoying this beautiful land, the better off I think that we're all going to be. Thinking about what your community looks like for vaccination status. I mean, if your community is vaccinated, that makes a huge difference before getting there. So really knowing your community's vaccine rates and status makes a big difference in what I can really say for recommending for planning. So when I'm looking at someplace like Skagway, that's 73% vaccinated, that's huge, and I think you can do it a lot more safely. Also thinking about the people who are coming in, and if they are vaccinated or not. And if people are not vaccinated, doing what you can to encourage testing as an alternative to identify cases early as an additional way. And then masking can be helpful, particularly in the indoor spaces. So again, these are kind of like layers, again, just like your jacket, your boots, and your layers. Your vaccine is kind of like a full-on bodysuit, and that's going to be your best layer of protection, but you can layer these other things, particularly if you don't know the vaccine status or people aren't there. And if you really don't know, having things outdoors is going to be safer. I think we're moving to a better place, honestly, in this country, as we're, you know, up to about 50% of the country is vaccinated. It is great to see, it's just going to continue to move down that risk. But while we still have 50% unvaccinated, we still have risk that people could get COVID and could get sick. So, you know, big Fourth of July gathering, is it risk-free? No, but you knew it was risk-free even prior to COVID. I mean, you know, car accidents can happen, other things can happen as well. There's more of a risk, well, we've allowed a lot of COVID spreading, but it's much less risky than it was last year, simply because we have a lot more people vaccinated than we did before. Does that kind of help in your planning?
Yeah, I would guess so. So in, I know outdoors is the perfect medium to be in, but if you've got people congregated within elbow-to-elbow space, and you don't know, hopefully, I'd be curious what the numbers turn out to be who are vaccinated in Saldovia, what are percentage? I would be very much interested to find out what we've got. But, so if you've got people elbow-to-elbow, and people have come in from the outside of the community, you don't know if they've been vaccinated, how do we work with that? I mean, what do we do as responsible community members if we've got people coming into the community, and we're elbow-to-elbow doing games, or whatever it might be? How do we go around that?
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, I think the first thing I would do is I would make sure as much of your community was vaccinated as possible. So if you get a bunch of people who come into your community bringing COVID, it's going to be less likely to impact you all, and they're not going to leave their special treat with you. They're going to take it back with them. So that's the best thing you can do, make sure they take COVID home with them instead of leaving it with you, so be vaccinated. Two, just encouraging, kind of, you know, creating spaces for distancing and/or masking, Two, just encouraging kind of, you know, creating spaces for distancing and or masking and or just saying, you know, like, you know, we really encourage people to be vaccinated. And what that looks like, so even messaging now, like, we really want to have a gigantic Fourth of July weekend. Like I said, we're making a big effort for May to try to get everyone vaccinated that we possibly can. So that your Fourth of July, you don't have to worry about it, so you have as many people as possible who are there and are vaccinated. Constantly, the data shows that friends and family are the biggest influencers if people are going to get vaccinated. And the second one is is healthcare providers. So, you know, making, even just making a public statement about that, we want a fantastic Fourth of July, we want to have this be a big party. Please do what you can to get vaccinated before then, we encourage everyone who comes to be vaccinated prior to it. You know, if you're not vaccinated, we have free testing available here so you can get tested beforehand. You know, and and then having things like masking, I was talking to a gentleman the other day who had very strong beliefs. And there's no, I don't think he's ever going to get vaccinated, but he's like, I'm choosing to spend my life in a N ninety-five or a KN ninety-five. Because I know I need to protect myself and he's like, that's just a decision I want to make. You know, he's, that's his decision, that's fine. So giving people tools for other things, you know, for him, that was a decision that was, it was a comfort level for him. And we all have separate decisions. But I think publicly messaging, you know, that this is really your goal is to have a big, wonderful Fourth of July with lots of people. But making sure that your community is protected afterwards and and trying to really encourage vaccinated individuals and if they're not vaccinated to test.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. Any other council members for questions before we go to the public? Okay, Razzy, I did see one hand up, did that go down or are they in a queue? Okay, I don't see any other hands up on the screen. Anyone from the audience have any questions for Dr. Zink tonight? Okay, not seeing any. All right, well, Dr. Zink.
Nothing, it's just nothing.
Harvey, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my internet is really dodgy tonight. I just. I did have a question, again, my internet's really dodgy and it was, I was missing some pieces. Did you say, Dr. Zink, that the state is perhaps willing to help with like a pop up for getting vaccinations? So if the city was looking to have a pop up here in the community over a weekend, we could potentially do that in May?
Absolutely, anything we can do, I feel like I will sing, I will dance, we will come do pop ups. Anything and everything we can do. So yes, if if there is something that we can help to do to overcome any barrier that you guys see to vaccination. You know, we can get a team out there to do it, we can get additional vaccine, we can make it happen. So if there is a time or a place or something that you feel like would help your community kind of really get through and get vaccinated, let us know. And we're happy to partner with you in any way we can.
Copy that. Thank you so much, and thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Okay, I think that was probably it on the questions. Dr. Zink, thanks again. I know this, I think the second or maybe third time that you've graciously given your time to spend with our community and answer questions. So we truly appreciate it and I'm sure you got your family attend to, so enjoy the rest of your evening and thanks again, we really appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you all, you've gained a special place in my heart, have a great night, enjoy your council meeting.
Thank you, come visit us sometime.
I want to. I need to vaccinate, thanks.
There you go.
Thank you, all right, we will, with that, it's about almost ten after six, we'll go ahead and adjourn the work session. We'll take a five minute break and then give folks on the line there a chance to log off and then log back in on the regular Zoom link. And then we'll commence, yep, go ahead. Oh, it's the same one. Okay, yep, let's give it just a couple of minutes here, get situated, then we'll come right back. We'll go and adjourn the work session.
And thank you, everybody online, I don't know if you heard me, but this is the same meeting link. So it sounds like we're going to take a five to ten minute recess to restart, to start the regular meeting. So you can stay on this line if you choose, we'll just mute the room and and remain online. But this will be the same link for the regular meeting.
Great, thank you, Heidi.